All right, well, welcome to my district two advisory council meeting councillor Mike Cohen and I do these meetings a couple of times a year. With some constituents, just to give updates on various things in the district tonight, I wanted to talk about residential pools, the new rules that are coming in across the province of Quebec. We've got a new building inspector for pools, Arienne Seer, she was supposed to join us tonight, but unfortunately for her, she had to do emergency dental surgery. So she did prepare a PowerPoint with a video. I hope you'll be able to hear it. If not, you'll be able to follow the words in the PowerPoint. And I will certainly, I think that will explain a lot. It's just an introductory thing and then we can talk about it afterwards. So I'm going to share my screen now. I'm going to run the video and and after it's over, we'll we'll have a discussion. So. Here we go.
For city council of my city. Well, I'm going to call you any later and see your number again. Nine. Hello?
Okay, so that was great. Someone is opening and closing a door on this call. So if you could please mute yourself.
Chair.
It's his chair.
It's a squeaky chair.
It's a chair. Okay, that's fine.
Really neat.
Yeah.
Really needs some WD forty.
Yeah, there you go. Okay, Gabe is Gabe is heading over there. So basically, the bulk of that presentation, of course. Was related to was related to outdoor pools. But she will be visiting every pool in the city. So her her contact information. Was there. If you need it at the end of the call, I'll repeat it for you. And she will, you know, so gave you could call her tomorrow, for instance. And ask her some of your questions because unlike Mr. LeMay, who was the one who visited you. He is a general building inspector. She specifically, we hired her exclusively for pools. And just so you know, the good news is is that. The regulations are not supposed to be in place until June twenty twenty three. And we're even hearing that it could go as long as September twenty twenty five. Before they actually have to take place. So there is going to be time to do this, but of course. And you know, Roz Golnik is on the on the call, and I know Roz has called me many times since she moved into Kildare Towers. Concerned about. Pools that she's seen, even like plastic pools and backyards that were a danger for kids. We hear so many terrible stories every year about kids drowning because they snuck into the backyard. And and they 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 drowned because the pool. So this is what Quebec is doing. It's smart. And again, we hired a building inspector exclusively for pools. And she intends to be to visit the four hundred pools. So that's indoor and outdoors. So. I know she didn't talk a lot. The obviously, the rules for an indoor pool are. Are much less than they are for the outdoor pools. You know, you you pretty much already have rules where you get that you have to follow. In terms of people, I know that a lot of them have rules where you can't just go alone in a pool. I know. I remember hearing the story of someone in our community. Whose wife went down to swim. And an hour later, he didn't hear from her. He went down and she drowned. She was on her own and nobody, nobody was there to help her.
That's right.
Like on.
Go ahead, Sydney.
Unfortunately, I don't think that's in the law. That's one of the problems. This city in the last half dozen years, I'll use that broad. Period has had three. In pool drownings of senior citizens. Because they were alone and there's nothing in the law. It's only each building tries to supervise or or cover it. And I don't think. You know, I know there are men and ladies who've gone at six and six thirty in the morning and have gone alone.
Yeah.
If they put that in the law would be a lot easier to police, but it's not in the law, as far as I know.
And I I I tend to agree with you because I've been at at some condos in the community where I've actually gone alone over the years and. And and nobody stopped me. You're right. I I think it's I don't know if the municipalities have the power to do that on their own. I think the province has to do it. But the fact that the province is already coming down with these kind of rules. Will will have to see, you know, during the election if this is an issue, but we will check with Ariane, but it's a good point.
Mike.
Go ahead, Frank. Frank, yeah.
There's the pool across here, the Kildare. Have to kill their place from the parking lot. People can actually access the pool, which is a concern.
Yes, they're they're a Jeremy. Jeremy is on the call. Jeremy, you're there. I see Jeremy there because Jeremy lives in.
Yeah.
So Jeremy, Jeremy, that that's the pool in your complex, right? Is it not?
Uh, yeah, there. Yeah, it's. Well, they're working on it and.
Cause I see people, I see people actually that jump over the fence sometimes and just.
Yeah. Well, that's a pool that, you know, Jeremy, I'd really appreciate you contacting. Your building manager to let them know when you, you know, we're going to have a recording of this and I'll post the link on my on my mic coin dot C A. Because the building owners need to know about this and you're right, Frank, that one is anybody, any kid could go there and, you know, because it's an open space. Yeah.
We also have here, I just this past weekend, I noticed my neighbor across the way in a. An apartment condo building. They have a terrace on the floor that they're on rather than just straight, you know, from the ground up of balconies. His where he's located, there was a terrace there, a large terrace outdoors. And they put down when he's blow up by pools, maybe about eighteen inches high. And once it's flat on the surface there, you really can't see it from the street or anywhere else unless you're. You know, in a unit above him on the second or third or fifth floor. So like, that's not really visible for any type of infection. That could present the problem as well. Obviously, an eighteen inch. Type height, it's not for six foot adult. Obviously, there's going to be children going into it.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. And you know, I mean, the fact is, there's some people here who don't have pools. But some people might decide to have one constructed. I mean, every summer I go, there's they're growing the pools in Cold Sea Luke. I I I saw one go up. I think it was last summer within out within like two weeks. I can't believe it was built in like two weeks. So but it's it's definitely a very important subject. And again, we're going to do something much more detailed in the next couple of months to explain this. Any other comments or questions? Gabe, did you want to bring up your concern? Go ahead.
Yeah, that presentation didn't address at all.
No.
What's, you know, the the concern for our our community? And that is the level of supervision.
Yes.
You know, needed to keep the pool open to be in, you know, compliance with these laws. Just so the rest of you know, how how many other people on this call live in developments that have. Outdoor outdoor pools that are considered, you know, what the municipality terms semi-private pools.
Well, just to answer, I live in in one and Ronan Arby used to live there. Now that complex. Always has had lifeguards.
Yeah, because, yeah, because they they have a larger pool and it's in their bylaws. I think it's been in their bylaws from like from the beginning.
Yeah, however, Jeremy. Do you for your pool? Because it's the same thing as yours, Gabe. Do you have supervision at your pool?
I can answer that. I can ask that for her.
Well, I mean, yes, and I I think by law you need it because it's an apartment or.
Well, Jeremy, you have an outdoor pool. Is there? Is there? Is there supervision there? Do you have a lifeguard or anything of that sort?
Yes, yeah, there's always supervision and when they go on lunch, they kick everyone out and.
Okay, what Ross?
Jeremy, I hate Jeremy, I hate to I hate to burst the bubble, but I can see across my my dining room and there's kids in the pool with no supervision. Whether it's lunch, especially late at night around seven P M. There is no supervision and sometimes. I walk a lot on Sir Walter Scott and Liam Ramon. And there's kids sneaking in with no supervision. So that to me is a major concern. And a couple of times I've actually went to the kids. And and addressed to the kids to leave the premises because you don't live there. So there is no supervision. It's a major concern because I've seen a lot of kids just playing in there and there's really nobody that is watching these kids.
Are you facing a different pool?
The nose, the one that the one that's the one that faces Sir Walter Scott outdoors. It's in the parking lot area of Sir Walter Scott outdoors, the pool.
There's only one Jeremy that for like all the buildings that are owned by that company. There are only only one.
C L V.
Yeah, by the way, if people want to ask the question, just use the the hand, put up your hand in the in the reaction section, please. So, but let me ask Roz Belnik, from what you can see from your building, I know your your pool has not been operational. Is it going to be operational this summer from what you know?
Are you kidding? They haven't even started anything. And this is the third year that we have not had the pool.
Okay. All right, so.
I think it's time that we ask for a reduction in rent.
Yeah, well, that is a tenant landlord relations issue. However, so I know you've only been there a few years. Are you aware if when it was open, if they actually had a lifeguard or supervision?
What in twenty nineteen, when I moved in, there was a lifeguard.
Okay, so there you go. So that that is interesting, Gabe. It it I I really, I think if you call Ariane tomorrow, you'll get an answer immediately.
Go ahead, Gabe. I I have already this, you know, I've already had some discussion with her concerning this.
Okay.
And according to what she told me in an email from. May eleventh. Because we're considered a semi-private pool, but our, you know, our pool surface area is less than a hundred square meters. We are not required to hire a lifeguard. But we do have to have, according to the public bath safety regulation. Somebody who has what is called an aquatic emergency care certificate.
Okay.
So why? No. So why? Why is this? Why is this an issue? Well, a couple of days ago, I spent about half an hour talking with Donna, the the pool manager at the A C C. You know, who knows a lot more about these things than I do. And of all the, you know, kinds of various, you know, safety certifications. You know, necessary to be a pool supervisor. Guess which one is the rarest and most difficult to find? The aquatic emergency care.
That one.
Yeah. So these regulations that are supposed to make things like easier and cheaper for us. So we don't have to hire, you know, like a full-fledged, fully qualified lifeguard are actually making things more difficult. Because, you know, this thing is apparently, you know, or people with this thing. Are apparently like difficult to find even at the best of times. And the whole city right now, I mean, like the city, I mean, like the whole island of Montreal. Is facing a lot, you know, like a lifeguard crush. Okay, they, you know, the the A C C is short-staffed. You know, she told me that other pool managers she knows in Hempstead, you know, Montreal West, like there, you know, you know, you like some municipal pools in the city of Montreal. You know, they're looking at having to like not open their pools at least some fraction of the time. You know, because they can't, they can't find anybody. You're like, even the why, you know, which used to set the standard for, you know, for these things. Okay, where 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 are they all going? Long guy. Okay, because they pay the most now.
Interesting.
Anyway, she said there are only about a third as many, you know, lifeguards available for work as there were before the beginning of the pandemic.
Right. So Gabe, I'm glad you raised this tonight. I will be speaking to Ariane tomorrow and I'm going to see whether there's any wiggle room to do something that's still safe. But maybe is not in that that rigid because we really don't want to have people deprived of a pool for the summer, but we also want to make sure that it's safe.
Okay, so she she told me if she also told me if you want to get one of these things. You can take a training session. With I I didn't follow the with a lifesaving society, but the session lasts about twenty, you know, about twenty hours. The person has to be at least fourteen years old to know how to swim. So technically, any anybody at our community, you know, could do it, provided we take this training session. And and get the certificate, but then that means that somebody here is going to have to agree to give up their time. For however long it is, we want, you know, we want to keep the pool open and, you know, like we all have lives and families.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So let's, Gabe, let's talk offline about that and see what we can do. We'll talk to Ariane, but you know, hopefully there's a solution for it and we'll have to look into. You know, we have Officer Palucci patrolling Sir Walter Scott and and Jeremy. So. By the way, I see someone has joined. I don't recognize you on the screen iPhone, it just says, who who's joined the the calls, just so I know who's on.
My name is Aaron. I represent Howard Salavich Properties. So I apologize.
Okay, so Howard Salavich, what's your name, Aaron?
My name is Aaron Lerner. I'm the director of the residential properties. Yeah.
Okay, good. So actually, Aaron, Aaron, for the Roz Golnik is one of your residents. She's on the call. Okay, she wanted wanted to know if there's an update, if if your pool is going to open this summer on Kildare Towers.
She's at the Kildare Towers Pool. Unfortunately, this year we won't be able to open the pool just because we are replacing. The roof back on top. Basically, on that level in the backyard.
On top of my car.
I'm sorry.
On top of my car.
It, you know, if your car is parked in the garage, then everyone's car is underneath the underneath the pool and that membrane and everything. So. We have a code in place. It's signed contract and we're starting the work. We have a permit from the city of Coats St. Luke and we do apologize. It's just. Not possible to open the pool this year due to the fact that we'll be moving dirt in, moving dirt out, trucks in, trucks out. So safety issues is. Unfortunately, it's got to be closed and we really hope to open it next year.
I have a favor to ask.
Sure.
And they put the fence back up. If they could make it a little bit bigger. So that there's room to put a chair. In between the pool and the fence and the lifeguard doesn't have to jump over people. And also to make it in a rectangle, not in a whatever.
Okay, you know, definitely not looking at the plans right in front of me and having the plans and specs of the actual construction work. I couldn't give you an actual answer, but I'd be I'd be more than happy to sit down with you and Patricia. You know, to have a meeting regarding, you know, some, you know, some improvements we can make on the property.
All right. Well, then that's for next year. So Roz, you know, take that up with Aaron offline. I'm glad that we have him on board. I haven't had a chance of meeting him, but of course I've worked with Howard for years. Now, I just want to ask you a question because people around the table want to know, I you're you're new to Howard's team or you've been there a while?
Sure, I I'm new. I've been there about six months. I'm taking over for the previous person working in the role, just directing all those residential properties and. Kildare Towers falls, you know, into that umbrella. I previously have worked at REITs such as Northview and Timber Creek. So. I come with some corporate knowledge coming over and I'm also, you know, worked in the real estate business, having a real estate license for the last twelve years.
Okay, so just for the benefit of the other people on the call. What have you done for maybe other buildings and regarding pools, supervision at the pools, lifeguards or people? Like Gabe just explained, you know, have certain certification. How are you handling that?
I could say this, at another one of our buildings, it's in a different borough. Throw it out there. It's in the south. You know, we have a pool that's it's very operational and and you know, we we tend to do maintenance before opening. We have another one in T M R that we have. You know, where in terms of lifeguards, it is another department. I'm not specifically handling, but I have definitely heard there's a shortage of staff, shortage of lifeguards. Very difficult to find, you know, people to work on the pool, but I would have to get back to you, sir, exactly on.
Okay, well, you know, I would I wouldn't like, I would like you to get back at me, back to me, M Cohen at codesayluke.org.
Let me take that down.
Yeah, I would love you to get back to me because this is information that is very valuable to share with not only yourself, but. You know, we want to, there was a lot of.
Absolutely. I I know we do have a third party company that we outsource to hire lifeguards. I just don't have the name of the company in front of me. Susan would have it at her office.
If you have the third party company, Gabe, you indeed is very interested in potentially hiring them, right?
Is it P L P S? It is from off the top of my head.
They're having, they're having trouble getting lifeguards too.
I heard that today.
They've all, they've already assigned everybody that that they had. And you know, just like the case with the municipal pools, they're having trouble finding more people.
Understandable. It's not just in this sector of work. It's restaurants, it's service industry, it's anything that's it seems to me that's paying under fifty grand a year, twenty an hour type thing. And it's, you know, people are getting more money serve at home.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Well, anyway, I'm glad you're on the the call. We'll have other items of interest, Aaron, but I'm glad you're here because because Howard owns two of our buildings in my district. So we did. So it's it's good for you to be online. Anybody else have any other comments or questions regarding pools before we move on? Anybody else? And again, go ahead, Gabe.
Yeah, again, it's about the lifeguarding. Are these rules actually, are these new regulations actually going to be applied across the board to both outdoor and indoor pools?
Not indoor pools, as Sydney just mentioned, it's not the same thing.
You you can you can drown just as easily unsupervised.
You one hundred percent can. And like Sydney said, that's it's a Quebec, this is the Quebec government. That's doing this. Now, the new rules that we just talked about are not coming into play this year, next year, the year after, the year after that. But in terms of having a lifeguard or supervision, they don't apply for indoor pools. It's not the same thing. They assume that an indoor pool that you, you know, you can't just go and open the door. There's usually a lock, a little kid.
I, you know, that's that's conflating two different things. That's conflating safety and security. Okay, you can have a pool that's secure but not safe and one that's safe but not secure.
Yeah, you're you're right. As far as indoor pools, I would, I believe, most, if not all condos have a closed circuit system to oversee the pool. Those of us who have doorman have the monitor at the doorman's position. It's not foolproof. It's not a hundred percent because. If he turns away and someone is drowning, it could take a while for him to to see it. It's better than nothing, but as far as I know, indoor pools everywhere are not covered by lifeguards.
But we could bring this up with whoever our next M and A is going to be in the next election. Anyone here want to run? The Liberals have an opening. And and we we certainly can, you know, bring that up because whether our M and A is in opposition, they can still raise it. And this is an issue that frankly is. Is very, very important. So we'll definitely follow it up.
And it'll lead, it'll lead to the closing of all the indoor pools because if there's a shortage now, can you imagine on a three hundred and sixty-five day operation of an indoor pool? To find someone for eighteen hours a day.
That's absolutely, absolutely why Sydney, some buildings have to police themselves, like you said. And and hope that they don't have any incidents. I know that family members of mine. Live in a particular building where it's extremely well supervised with the closed circuit. And, you know, to get in there, you need the security guard that you can't even go on your own. They have to open it. They have to close it. And, you know. You know, they they go and they actually, when they know there's someone in the pool, the security guard goes back every few minutes and just checks. So every building is different, but maybe this is a warning that we need to give. I mean, swimming indoors is year round. And as you notice, the new rules for outdoors will also include hot tubs. Hot tubs are also going to be included in the new rules for outdoor pools. Some people that have that, so. Yeah.
Unbelievable.
Yeah. All right. Any other comments on this issue? If not, I'll move on to to the next. Just some information items that I wanted to share. And again, what I want to do at the end, I'm not going to be along with this. I want. Anybody to bring up an issue. That they feel may be helpful to other people on the call that they may may have a question about something like, for instance, last year. Everyone was asking how are you handling COVID in your building or your residence? And it was very helpful. People got information from other people. So we can do that at the end. Now, I want the reason why we didn't have a full-blown district town hall meeting tonight is because. On Wednesday, June eighth. We are having a very, very significant meeting online for the city at seven o'clock. It's going to be the unveiling of the master plan for the city of Coats St. Luke. And you can go to codesayluke.org/engage. Dot org slash engage. You must register. And then you'll be sent a link. Now, this has to do with, you know, the the zoning bylaw for the entire city. And what is most interesting and what's going to come out of this and where we're going to get feedback and it affects my district greatly. Is the redevelopment of the three major malls, Cartier Cavendish, the Coatsy Luke Shopping Center. And Decar, Decar, Decary Square. All three of them have major redevelopment plans. So, for instance, Heather, it will impact where you live because there'll be a lot of construction again going on when, when and if that happens, but. We're going to have meetings like we're having now in much larger numbers.
Okay.
For instance, for Cavendish, when it gets public, we're going to talk to the people living very close to the Cartier Cavendish to get their opinions, anyone, of course. And Decary Square, now I'm not going to, I can't provide you at the moment what what their plans are. Next Wednesday, you're going to get a kind of a taste. Of of what this plan is and it's quite grandiose. You're talking about major, major, major renovations with, you know, with residential apartments. The mall has a very, very big plan to to, you know, redo what you see now and. Make it almost look like a Meisner Place kind of play, kind of thing with with another residential building in the middle. Decary Square has a. A large tower they want to do and of course Coastal Shopping Center, it looks the same as when I went there fifty years ago as a little kid. So, you know. Yeah, the only thing that's not there anymore is Vic Tanny's, but everything else, everything else is, and Ben Ash, and Ben Ash. Yeah, that's it exactly. And Steinberg's, Steinberg's.
When is all this starting?
So, well, we 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 are going to get the ball rolling next Wednesday, June eighth. Please register. You will find it very interesting and you'll get a lot of answers that night. It's not starting this year, I can assure you. There's going to be a very, very thorough consultation process. With residents and doing it online allows more people to participate and learn about it.
Yeah.
But I mean, I think that they would like to have this thing started, their their reconstruction, if they get approval, of course. We haven't approved anything. We 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 haven't, you know, we've had discussions with them in general, but no approval. So I think they'd like to have. Could be as early as two years from now, they would start.
Are they all starting at the same time? Or are they going to be starting?
We 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 don't, we don't know. I think they'll all be on different timelines. But Roz, it'll also impact your building and and Aaron, because you're right next to the Cartier Cavendish. And some others, you know, it won't impact you that much, but.
There's two buildings, which wrap around.
Are they tearing down?
Cavendish would be facing and then Kildar Towers in the back.
Well, I I'm I'm just guessing here, but what I'm guessing is that they're going to keep a lot of what they have there and kind of redesign. I mean, I don't think the. The IGA or Farmer Pre will go anywhere, but they may be relocated. They're just moving.
A lot of big things in strip malls and out parcels and stuff like that is to actually. Do residential development on the actual land of the strip mall. So Decary Square. That tower, where's it gonna go up? It's probably gonna go up in the, you know, south, it'll be north parking lot. Kind of like diagonal across from where Pizza Hut is.
Yeah, that's killing days, right? That is why, that is why tune in next week and tune in after that. It's going to be very, very fascinating to see what their plans are. These are very, very, very major projects. And look, for the Cartier Cavendish, I mean, it's not, you know, they they need to survive and they need, they need to, they need to be able to pay their. You know, pay their taxes and be able to do well. So I think that, you know, their their movie theaters are opening, they're a little delayed, but they're supposed to be ready by end of June, beginning of July. Obviously, he's signing a lease and built a brand new theater, the owner, I spoke to him just last week. So, I mean, they're not going to go anywhere.
Wait, theater at the mall? Because the sign's taken down. It said something was coming and now there's no.
It's coming, it's coming. I think the sign was down because people were hoping it was going to be here in April, but there was a lot of issues with with that with supply. As you know, Aaron, for the business in terms of getting parts and getting supplies, you know, for they had, you know, the the Cineplex.
There has not been one sector that has not been affected in terms of materials, luminance, glass, everything.
Exactly. So Alan Winikoff has a question, go ahead, Alan.
Yeah, with this meeting coming up on the eighth, how much of it will be publicized or will it be publicized more? Because we we just heard about it tonight. But I'm sure the community would like to hear about it.
Okay, well, it was in the suburban in a story last week and it is, it it is in the suburban today on the community calendar, very, very prominently. It's on our website and what we're, what what I'm going to do is I'm going to, you know, we're. We're going to send it out. So what, very important that, you know, you share this information with, which building are you in, Alan?
We're at Mackel Manor.
Okay, so Mackel Manor. So, you know, you share it with everyone in Mackel Manor because you're right across the street, so you'll definitely want them to know about it. And the key thing is that each councillor, Heather, you're up, I'm going to mute you. Okay, oh, Heather, see, okay, Heather found it in the suburban, perfect.
Yeah.
But what we're gonna do is.
An invitation.
A nine, page A nine.
Okay, perfect. And Roz got an invitation. So there we go. So I I'm gonna, but I'm gonna, I'm promoting it tonight. If we don't have a huge number, Jerry Zell is joining us now. So let Jerry Zell come on from also from Rembrandt. So we will, we will, I will publicize it to the different buildings. But those who are in the buildings here, please send it out to your mailing list of people living in your building. Heather, people living in your condo, share it with them. It's of of extreme interest for people living on Park Place. Now, again, at the first meeting is just going to be kind of, you know, it's going to let everybody know what's happening. It's not going to be, you know, the the. The actual developers giving their presentations, but that will follow soon. We have a plan that'll carry through the fall and the winter. And even if you're in Florida, Sydney, people, you'll be able to follow it because we can do it online. It's not like the olden days.
For those people who may have seen something earlier, the concept for Cartier Cavendish was to build where the dry cleaner is, to build up.
Yes.
At that location, at the back. A seniors residence, whether that's still on the books or not, we'll know, I guess.
They have a zoning already, but I think what they have planned is quite extraordinary. And of course, with the with Decary Square, we have to really be careful because we know what a bottleneck it already is right now. If you try to get across Decary in the morning. You need to leave sometimes thirty to forty minutes in advance. So if you add a a big building with another couple of hundred more people. But they've done, they're they're going to be doing traffic studies and we're going to see, you know, what can come up.
They just built another building next to Luxor, so they have on Abraham de Sola.
That's right.
Hampstead or North, North Hampstead, Coates St. Luke, whatever you guys call it now. There's two massive towers just on the other side of the mall.
That's right, that's right. Exactly, exactly.
One of the rental building, one condos.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, exactly. So, so that, that's it, Gabe, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. All of these, you know, like commercial redevelopment plans. Are they taking into account what the Royal Mount Development is likely to do? Because that that thing is basically like a smaller scale version of Cartier d'Ishtant in Brussels.
You're going to hear from the mayor next week and from Mitch Kajavsky, who's councillor and is Chair of our Planning Advisory Committee. And and I can tell you, we've been talking about this redevelopment for the last couple of years. And before we even have a discussion, before we even have any consultation. There's been a lot of back and forth, not by city councillors, but by our experts to say, look, you know, you're off track, don't. Don't come to us with that, that's not doable. So they've been working on plans. And the first thing we have to do is consult with our citizens, all of our citizens, and then carry it on that way. And yes, traffic studies are going to be very important. You know, not necessarily Cartier Cavendish and the Coatsy Luke Shopping Center, but certainly Decary Square. You know, that's going to be a major one in terms of, in terms of traffic studies. But, you know, Decary Square. They too have been around in their current form for a very, very long time. And they need a redo, but it's going to be explained in much better context next week and I think it'll make a lot more sense. So please make a note of that date. Any other questions on that issue? Okay, perfect. Thank you. So. Just a quick note, Mark Shigal Avenue, for those of you who live near there or drive down that street. The the snow dump, they begun slowly to break it up. But that's a big, huge job, but it should be done sometime this month between breaking it up and the heat. The the empty lot that was not done properly. We had, of course, the Equinox developers who used the empty lot for parking. They did not return it to the way they found it. They. They had, we were in litigation, they went and they tried to fix it, they didn't do it properly. In October, we subcontracted again, it did, the grass didn't grow properly. So if you go to my blog at Mike Cohen dot C A. You will see the detailed update. We are going to be laying sod this time. And we're going to be doing a nice, beautiful development of that park this this month in June, planting trees, putting lighting up. And and a nice pathway, more benches. So it's going to be very, it's going to be very pretty. So all will be well in the end and it's not going to be a long job. Because we're laying sod and sod grows, you know, right away. It's basically you're laying grass, we've got to water it to make sure it's good. So. I thank to our staff for doing that. Rembrandt Park, we have the. Basketball courts are now in full operation for the full summer, soccer field, very, very popular with the young kids. We just did the roof at the chalet at Rembrandt Park. And that is open to some seniors activities, some artwork and so on and so forth. Also, a. Handicap accessible washroom has been installed there and that was done, done over the winter. Sir Walter Scott, I know Frank and Jeremy are very interested in the. Speeding that has taken place on that street. I spoke to Frank just a few days ago. We were going to put a speed bump up there, but Frank is getting some neighbors. And there's two, there's a two large empty lots on Sir Walter Scott. And they've been, they've been for almost twenty years, Elon Ramon and Sir Walter Scott had that development. And the owners never built on it. Well, they've decided to build. And very soon, we expect a construction to begin. So sorry, Frank, for what you're going to experience for a few months. Two large homes are going to go up there and the traffic, the engineering department of Coatsy Luke came to me on Monday. And said, look, it's not feasible to have speed bumps up with the with the trucks that are going to be there and and. You know, the 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 fact that they're going to be up, blocking a big part of the street, cars are going to have no choice but to be slow. So. If they do this quickly, they'll put it up. Frank, go ahead, give you, I know you want to.
It's, it's going to get worse because having trucks now, having trucks parked, their cars are going to go around and still speed. I've seen this before when Hydro Quebec was here working, trucks, big trucks. Cars intend to speed on Sir Walter Scott, especially when they take the curve. It's actually quite dangerous. My next door neighbor in front of me have two twins. Which are playing basketball outside. And last night I experienced for myself a car taking a sharp curve. Like I felt very scared for the two kids. They immediately moved out of the way as they speed. So even by trucks, big trucks being parked there, Mike. It's going to be worse. Having a speed bump, you have no choice but to, to, to yield and and whatever. So. I mean, your traffic, your your transport committee should really understand what laws are in traffic and not just. Pretend that they're, oh, we're not going to do it now because there's trucks. Trucks are going in to excavate only. So an excavation only lasts one week, ten days at most, an excavation to do two lots. After that, it's smaller trucks that are going to be parked, which is even going to be worse. They're going to be parked on the opposite side where there's no parking sign. Right? On one side you can park. So it's going to get, matters are going to get even worse because now it's going to go into one lane and cars are going to be speeding even more than before. So technically, having a speed bump does not cause more confusion.
Well, Frank, I'm going to share this video with our traffic engineer. I'm going to tell him to go to the Frank Palucci part of the video and we'll follow it up. This is not, I I reported to you Monday, the moment we were informed, the entire council was not the time or place for me to have a debate with them, but I know we had the meeting tonight, so I will follow it up. And they're they're late on the snow, speed bumps in general, the one on Mark Shigal hasn't gone up. Public Works has been really overwhelmed and 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 hopefully.
And they're late on painting the streets and and the signs as well.
Yeah, and that, and by the way, a lot of that has to do with materials that are not available. Like, like Aaron said, everything is on back order and there's been so many things like, you know, putting new lights up at at a corner. Are delayed, not because we're not doing our job, but because we don't have the materials. So Jeremy has.
A suggestion, a suggestion with regard to Sir Walter Scott. Unfortunately, there are too many people zipping out of the city hall parking lot onto Sir Walter Scott.
Sydney, you're absolutely right.
This will be the time to close that entrance exit pending at least the reconstruction.
Sid, Sid, actually, there, we need to get the speed bump. That is seasonally put near the entrance to the back of the library. And when that goes up, they slow down. I use that all the time and I, I'm very careful because I'm a councillor. However, when the speed bump's there, I go even slower. So that's speed, I'm going to check and see what the status is, but we we did a couple of years ago for the first time, put a speed bump there, made a huge.
It wasn't there last year, they removed it last year, Mike.
No, it was there, Frank. Frank, it was there. It was there a hundred percent.
I walk by there, I walk by there frequently and. There are people who are using it as a shortcut. I'm not talking people who come from the parking lot itself. They come, say, from Cavendish. And come zipping around and they're also doing speed within the parking lot, which is a little dangerous. We have a lot of. Senior citizens parking their cars and trying to walk to the library and.
They take their lives into their hands. Sidney, I've taken video shots. I have a radar on my phone where I've taken snapshots and some are going like up to eighty kilometers an hour.
Yeah, and and some of that, Frank, you saw in your old house when they were going through the avenue, going like to the lot. So it is an issue and and I'm going to flag it once again. So thanks for bringing it up. I'll let Jeremy, Jeremy had a comment, go ahead, Jeremy.
I don't know, I'm just gonna ask about the paint. You mentioned there's like a shortage for.
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not certain. I'm just telling you that there's been a lot of things that people have called me and said, why hasn't X Y been done yet? When I called the city, they tell me that we're, we're, we're waiting for supplies. We're late on, we're, you know, we can't get the supplies. There is a current problem. I know I work at the school board and I know the delay. In everything, I mean, I ordered a computer in April and it may not come till July. So it's just, you know, because it's not the computers, but it's the parts. So it's just a problem. So I know, I know our Department of Public Works works very, very hard. And they, they're, they're, they do everything they can on time. So there has been a lot of issues with with supply. So in terms of, but I'm going to get an update on these things. I'm, it's great to have these calls because it's kind of a wake up call for me. On what issues are on the mind of citizens, so I can bring them up. So I will check. Everything that's being discussed will be, I'll be getting updates tomorrow.
Montreal, Montreal West already has done most of their painting. Yeah, the the their their street painting, I saw today, they're doing a lot of.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll get an answer and, you know, we'll, we'll get an answer, we'll report back. So I promise that. So, but Jeremy, anything you wanted to add about that?
Um, well, just because I I walk a lot in the city and I walk to Trudeau Park and. A few times, because there's no pain to feel like I'm going to get run over because the drivers are a bit crazy in that area. So. You know, it seems dangerous and.
Yeah.
And I also, I know you mentioned a speed bump, but I think every night I hear speeding. I don't know if it's from. Like where Bialik is or if it's from Sir Walter Scott, but.
It's from all over.
It is everywhere and we have police, we have the police, traffic lieutenant on our traffic committee calls. And of course, we share. The police station with Montreal West and not only Montreal West and Hampstead, but now N D G. So it's a huge area and when we had the police station at the corner of Cavendish. And Kildare, they were right there and there was much more presence. Now, we still have a great relationship with the commander, but it's not the same. And we try to get spot checks and we 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 have reported Cavendish, Mark Shigal, but yeah, it is happening and it's a shame. I've seen people myself when I'm walking and and when I'm driving, walking on certain streets and. It's a lot of young people, a lot of young people driving recklessly and it's very, very frustrating.
Mike, with all due respect, the city of Hampstead seems to have a police car there almost every day. On Queen Mary, on Netherwood, around the corners, watching. They must be picking up. Thousands of dollars, not just hundreds. We'd never have a police car stationed. Throughout Coates St. Luke in different locations and that's because our administration, with all due respect, you elected people. Don't put the pressure on to have that done. I know we have a lot of people who will be unhappy when they get tickets for speeding. But if you want to promote safety, that's the only way. When it hurts them in their wallets, then people will slow down. And as I say, I walk a lot now, I also drive, I drive, I think relatively carefully and people are passing me on Cavendish. I'm doing fifty and they're doing seventy and it's just a fifty street. We don't have the enforcement that we used to have. For example, just on Cavendish, they used to put a man. On the island adjacent to the the fence. And as people came from the fleet and and the south to north. And as people came from the fleet and and the south to north. They would be picked off like flies for the speed. I haven't seen that in the last two and a half years. And Frank is nodding his head because. Those of us who are around all the time see it. And we're not getting the enforcement because the city is not putting the pressure on to say, hey.
I can I can assure you, Sydney, Sydney, I can assure you, I sit on the traffic committee meetings every month. And that is definitely not the case. It's not even a matter of pressure. We have a, we have one of our managers at the city. Who's in virtual daily touch with uh with the commander. By the way, we're experiencing much more problems than. Uh than 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 speeding. We're also experiencing. We're not car car theft is is on the rise, and we're and Roz, I'll get to you next, don't worry. Um uh uh but also breaking and entering there, there are some of the photos of some of the people have been shown. Um on the Coatesy Luke families, Coatesy Luke ideas, uh very frightening. Uh people uh breaking in, they had a a mugshot, an actual shot from the from the doorbell of photo camera. Of this young person who was basically trying to break into a house, so. The police are 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 vigilant, and they maybe have, they're they're gonna be doing some action on that, so. They, the thing is, uh Sid, I I can't speak for Hampstead, but. Uh we're lucky to have a station that's physically based in Coates St. Luke, but the territory.
Yeah, but the the you did, their territory is much bigger now.
It's much bigger now, and therefore we don't have the 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 numbers that we did before. Look, the people in N D G are even more angry because they had it. They had their state, the police station removed from N D G. But anyhow. Point taken. We don't have to go in detail, but point taken. It's not something that we're. Taking for granted, and I'm always bringing it up at every traffic committee meeting, and I. I've had the uh the the traffic commander come and spend time with me at the corners, sometimes with them, so maybe it's time for me to invite him again to do the same thing.
Have him come see me, have him come see me with you, and I'll.
Well, absolutely, Frank. You would be included as my lieutenant. You are my lieutenant, so I would include you. But we also have, uh you know, we're also looking again for a crossing guard, and we can't find a crossing guard for Kildare and Cavendish, and we've tried, we've put ads, we've done everything. We had a public security guard who was doing it last fall. So if you know anyone, and I'm not kidding here, there are people who come here, there's a lot of new immigrants that have come to the country. It's a. It's it's a full time uh five day a week job. It doesn't pay the level that some people would expect, but it's a it's a great job for someone who's retired, who who's very personal.
Sounds good. How much are they charged?
I I can't give you the exact price, uh but Bo would be a great crossing guard. No one would mess with Bo. And he looks, he looks so good on Facebook, Bo, with his new physique. He'd be terrific.
Forty pounds.
I know he looks great, but Sydney, your doorman, actually.
Used to be.
You deprived us, one of the Norman, he was fantastic, and he did it for years, because we had Archie for years. And we had uh uh then we had your your gentleman who's your doorman now, so. Seriously, please spread the word. If you know anybody who would be interested. If Jeremy's hand is still up because he wants to be the crossing guard, you're hired, Jeremy.
Uh, no, I I just have a separate uh question.
Go ahead.
I just wanna be clear, but in parks, you're not allowed electric scooters or bikes or any.
No, you're not. You're not. And in fact, last summer. Um I personally was at Rembrandt Park, and I actually was talking to the two ladies who. Came to me a year earlier and asked me if we can have legislation to block them. And I asked them, how's it going? And they said, they pointed to the soccer field where there were two kids on electric scooters. And I politely walked over to them, and I said, would you do me a favor, please? And would you take your scooters out of the park? If not. The attendant in the park is gonna have no choice but to call the police, and you'll be fined. And they left right away and said, we didn't know, even though there's a sign there. So no, they're not allowed.
For for me, I was in Trudeau Park maybe a week or two ago, and there's two kids on like electric. It wasn't even like the um. The thin scooter types, you know, it was like, it looked like an actual like. Bike motorcycle.
But Jeremy, if you see it, report it to the attendant working in one of the chalets. They will call the police. Sometimes public security will come.
Is is like if I call, they're already gone, the kids, so.
Sometimes they're gone, but uh listen, I'm not asking you to intervene. Uh with somebody stranger, but like I said, I was, I I mean, I I was happy to go to these young gentlemen. They were very polite, and they left, but look. People are not gonna follow rules. That's just the way it goes, and sometimes uh but our attendants will call. Sometimes it's public security, and they're close by, and. Just by the fact they come with their uh their trucks and their uniforms, uh they don't have enforcement powers for that, but they 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 they. They have a certain degree of respect that they get, so it it definitely does work. So uh my last item I wanted to share with you is that we're gonna have the first ever ever um in our district, an audible light. At the corner of Cavendish and the Avenue. We have a lot of people, a lot of people who are hard of hearing. Who have told us that when they go to that crossing, so this is right in front of your building, Rona. Um and uh people who uh I don't uh who are seniors, who or people who are not seniors who have hearing problems. Who uh or or uh sorry, not hearing problems, I apologize, who have vision problems, problems with their vision. And they can't.
Coming out of the garage, out of our garage?
Well, you know, the actual light from the from the um, you know, where City Hall is, and then you cross to go into the mall. So there's lights, they're not the one when you go left.
That's good.
There's people who are visually impaired. We have one like this already at the corner of Coatesy Luke and Westminster. It's gonna be up in the next month. And uh it it'll kind of tell the person you can cross now. So this is a big thing. It's gonna be tested out, and if it goes well, we're gonna put them in other parts, maybe Cavendish and Kildare will get them as well. Uh but you know, uh so just a good piece of information for people. Uh okay, so on that note, um is there anything? Oh, sorry, Roz, I apologize. I apologize. Go ahead, Roz. Sorry.
Okay, you said about people not following rules. There are two signs up, one way street, and they are still coming in that. The wrong way. I think you need to put a a big. A speed bump there.
Okay, you're talking an honorary to Balzac where people are coming in the opposite way.
You know, it's it's kind of really tough to get in there. If you're coming from the mall, you almost have to do an illegal U-turn just to get in. So maybe consider cutting out that. I know there's a median there. Is there a way for us to get a left turn into? The proper part? I don't know if you can visualize that, Mike.
I understand. I I have the same problem when I'm coming there from that direction, and if I really wanna come in legally, I've gotta go down. Uh you know, kill their road.
To the school. You almost have to go up to uh.
Uh uh you know what? Um I don't know if that could be done, but I understand where you're coming from. The question is, is that, is that a city? Uh responsibility, or is it something the building?
Well, we can't, we can't touch public land.
Well, you can't touch it unless. Unless we gave you permission, Aaron.
It's not on our land, so we wouldn't touch it anyway.
Once you're digging up the garage, you have these guys with their machinery. We'll just send them over there, and they can dig a little hole in the sidewalk, you know?
I'd have to run it by Howard.
Yeah, we we can change, we can even name the street Salavitch Way, Salavitch Way.
You wanna know something? He might go for that.
All right, let's see what we can do, but I will. But Roz, I will bring it up.
I'm gonna put a note in my little.
I will bring it up.
If we rename it Howard Salavitch Way, would he consider doing some work on the street?
All right, yes. All right, well, perfect, but it's a good question. I'm gonna bring it up with our traffic and our engineering people, see, because it is a problem. I've noticed it for years and. And it's, you know, I go to that building a lot to to meet with residents, and uh when I'm coming. You know, I try to come down Kildare Road and make a right, but if I'm coming the other way. And you're right, and that causes people to go uh and make an illegal, go league.
I gotta do a U-turn into Kildare or go straight in. The only legal way, I believe, is if I can make a left turn, but then I have to get into. Kind of a school zone type thing, right? Then we're sending, we're rerouting residents in the school zone. Having said that, coming up Kildare. When I'm coming out of my garage.
Yeah.
It's a little blind, and people are speeding. There's buses, there's everything. There's no, I don't know if there's a bus lane or. You know, it's a little dangerous.
Leave space between like so that while they're waiting for the lights to change, that people can go out through our garage or come in.
I agree with you. So our garage is a little bit exposed to oncoming traffic, and it could be a little blind to that traffic. It's just a note, it's something maybe to bring up.
But it is a good point. I appreciate that suggestion. Uh now, is there anything that people here would like to share? With uh like an an issue that you may be having either in your building, on your street, that you'd like to see if anyone else is experiencing the same thing?
I I.
Rona, go ahead.
When we come out of our, I'm at the Excelsior, so we come out of that driveway, you know, the garage, which is dangerous anyway, because you're coming and going at the. On the same spot, you know, people coming and going. But when we come to the street, people are walking. And and let you have to stop before the sidewalk, because you're gonna smash right into somebody walking. I I keep saying to Bo, they should put a light for the pedestrians, just be careful, there's a garage here. Because one day, somebody is gonna come out of the garage and smash right into a pedestrian. That's why.
I have the same thing on my coming out of. Garage, and everyone's coming from the bus stop onto.
Yeah, yeah, it's dangerous. It's there because.
Don't look.
Hey, ladies, it's the driver's responsibility to be safe. We all have driveways that come out from buildings to the sidewalk. You're supposed to be yourself. You stop before the sidewalk and then proceed. It's so different, a pedestrian or a car.
But they they tend to be so close, like they're almost so close to your car.
We all have that same problem, and you you can't have a light for the pedestrians.
Yeah.
Be realistic.
Okay, Sid, uh uh Rona, before uh Heather, I'll let Heather con- comment, and Alan's got his hand up. Uh I just wanna let you know that where I live, at my townhouse condo. I've been there twenty seven years, and it's the same thing as you're telling me, Rona. I don't know if you remember from when you lived across the street. But when I come out in the morning, we're in a more of a blind spot, because we've got cars on the left. And we can do this, and there's a lot of families, and then people are going to Chabad. And anybody can, the same thing with you, so we, you you're right, Sydney's right. We have to self-police. The building, I know that they had an issue years ago at the Man- Manmore Monticore, where people were driving in like crazy. So they put up their own speed bump and their own stop sign in there. So I think it's something that that is a very good point, Rona. I think you need to bring it up with your management.
Oh, very good. Thank you, Michael. I will.
Yeah, because uh because in in our complex where I live, there is no speed bump, there is no stop sign. People just know. But I've seen people dart out, and you probably saw it when you lived there too, Rona. And they dart out and and there's, and it's an accident waiting to happen, and I'm sure the same thing. Uh Gabe, in your in your place where your garage is a driveway, it's right on Kildare Road, and there's. It's tons of traffic, and you've got cars parked sometimes on both sides, right, Gabe?
Yeah. So yeah. It's blind spots both ways, and you know, well, you know, because I, you know, because there there are two two driveways that uh. You know, our our community has, and uh you know, the the one that I have to come out of is, you know, noticeably like shorter and steeper than the other, so. Like you, you need to apply a bit of power to be able to get up to the.
Yeah, I think it's a, I think there needs to be a sensitization campaign repeatedly with people in the building. Uh before I get to Alan, uh Heather, did you wanna add anything on that?
Well, I was just, no, because we have all the Bialiks, and sometimes there's people like. Decide to rest on the ledge of where our garage is. There's they're resting from walking at the bus stop. Well, you know, it's like nonstop. We've done this study, Mike, a couple of years ago, how many people are coming from the bus and coming from everywhere. I just, before I forget, it's very nice to see the orthodontist at my corner.
Yeah.
Uh I remember him since he taught my kids swimming at the pool.
Really? Okay, maybe he could, maybe you could hire him in his spare time to be a gaze pool. He could, he could give your kids braces and and run run your pool game.
Care certificate.
He probably does.
Or or at the very least, like like basic aquatic first aid, like.
Oh, he knows, he knows, anyway. Over there, like, is anything else opening beside him and those?
Good question. So um uh in the the building on the avenue. Um which has been vacant at the ground floor since it opened. Uh finally got a uh a commercial property, and it's a orthodontist, uh. Uh uh Jordan Nemis, whose father and mother own J and R's kosher. And uh they are uh uh so so uh they are occupying. Half of the first floor. It's beautiful. We had a little ribbon cutting. I went there, I got a tour. Uh very, very impressive and very nice. Uh a tenant, and uh we avoided getting the kind of tenant that'd be a nuisance for the the neighborhood. And there is availability for another tenant. Um uh there, so the the administration is looking for another one, and we'll see, but there's nothing on the horizon at the moment. I I don't know.
But that one was perfect, not, there's only probably three people going there at a time.
Exactly. And they have sixteen spots. They have sixteen parking spots in the parking lot. So it's it's perfect, and it's a nice addition to the neighborhood. Absolutely. Yeah, yeah, exactly. And it's so funny, because when I wrote about it on my on my Facebook page. My city councillor Facebook page, my orthodontist from. Forty something years ago, Dr. Eric Rees.
Mine, he was mine too in Caldwell.
He he is now still practicing in Saint Leonard, and he started commenting. About congratulating Jordan, and I started reminiscing with him.
Wow.
I have to connect with him.
Doctor Rees is my ortho, best I've ever had.
Smile, smile for us, Aaron. Let's see how, look at the, what a job.
Not great. It was a while ago. It was a while ago. I should probably start smiling.
I don't know. He was kind of young when, like, I was, I was like twelve. I think he was in his twenties when I when I started.
He must have been, Mike, because.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and amazing guy. Used to spend his time before my appointments. He called me in his office to discuss the Canadians, and then he would bring me out and look at my mouth. He was an amazing guy. Yeah, amazing guy. Yeah, my mother always.
I would think that Doctor Steinberg is about ready to retire.
Well, now you said, now that you've announced it on the air, Roz, we'll have to check and see. But I don't know. He's still going strong, Doctor Steinberg. He's got his clientele and.
Yeah, he's doing it. But my kids had it.
Sydney Margulies would know. He lives in, lives in Sydney's building.
He's in the building here, and he goes every day to the office. I don't see him retiring, but uh you know. There's competition everywhere, so this way, there are two orthodontists in the same neighborhood. But there are plenty of ortho- orthodontists in the city. I don't know if there's a shortage of of them. Maybe we could convince some of them to become medical doctors, because that's more of the.
Well, I think I think we need to convince them to become lifeguards. That's what we. Yeah.
Before before you get, you're gonna get to Alan, because he's had his hand up. I'd like to come back to a pet peeve of the corner. Uh opposite Bialik, so.
Yeah.
Go to Alan first.
Okay, go ahead, Alan, go ahead.
Okay, uh we have a small problem here, and I'll just bring it up. Uh on the traffic, our garage uh is on the north side of Mackel, the entrance to our building. When you're coming up Cavendish, you you make your left turn and you are on the north side, and you go into the garage. However, when you're coming from, let's say, uh Mamonades or Trudeau Park. You have to make a left turn across the traffic of Mackel to get into our garage. Now, a couple of years ago, they had a solid line there, and and a few of the people here got tickets for it. We went to the city councillor at the time, and now it's Andy Schuster, I believe, but it's uh it was, I forgot the one previously.
The late Ruth Kovak, yeah.
Right, and so she uh went to traffic, and they arranged to have a broken line. Yellow line put through over there in order to allow us to get into our garage when we're coming from west to east. Uh they just recently, well, not recently, but at the end of last year, when they painted the lines, again, they painted it solid. Now, I don't know if somebody ma- made a mistake or what happened there, but basically, if I'm coming, as I say, from Trudeau Park going towards Cavendish, I wanna get into my garage. I have to go somewhere else and go around something, come around the block. It's crazy.
Okay, you know what? Sometimes those things are done by error, mistake, but uh I would recommend that you uh email Andy at A Schuster. At Coatesaluke.org, and bring it to her attention, and she can look into it.
Perfect.
I'm not familiar with it, but I know we've had issues like that. We once had one done by mistake on Rembrandt, uh corner of Rembrandt and Coates St. Luke and uh. Kildare, and we had it, we had it fixed. So we had it done. So uh uh okay, uh Alan, thank you. Uh Sydney, go ahead.
Okay, at the corner of March Chagall and Kildare. The city installed no parking, no stopping signs for uh several car lengths. To ensure the security and safety of the kids. But there are still parents every darn day and grandparents, because I've seen the age of some of those drivers. Parking there, waiting for their dear brats to hop into the car. The the problem is very simple. If you're driving along. March Chagall and wish to turn right. It creates a beautiful blind spot, and you can't see the kids who are crossing, notwithstanding the so-called crossing guard. That the school employs. Security can come and sit there and not do a darn thing. So the question is, how do, I know you're gonna say there's only another couple of weeks left. But this has been a perennial problem the last couple of years. It improved, and it's it's is deteriorated again. That there are people parking too close to the corner on on March Chagall towards Kildare.
Is this drop off and pickup?
No, it's pickup.
Okay, all right, Sydney, I may note of it. Look into it, okay?
It's the afternoons, and the sign is very clear.
I'll look into it. I'm not often there. I'm there for drop off. I I see it, but I but I but I will, I will keep my ass. Of course, school's gonna be over in a few minutes. But 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 well, it's something that we need to take a look at, if not now, uh you know, the beginning of the school year. And and maybe I need to speak to the uh administration of the school, because they've done a lot, I have to tell you.
Yes, I I agree.
They didn't usually, they didn't even have crossing guards until I went and. They didn't usually, they didn't even have crossing guards until I went and spoke to them, because they used to have no control at all. Uh, but, uh, but I, a good point, Sydney, I'll.
It's improved, now, once, once we're talking about that corner, have you anything to report about that little piece of land? That the guy is trying to rezone, and you've refused.
Yes, thank you for asking, yes, so, in the parking lot where Chabad is. There are developers that want to build there, now, the building, right, the, the land is zoned. Uh, this is right on Marchagall, near, uh, Beth Chabad, and across from Bialik, it is zoned for a two-story. Uh, commercial building, so you could put a pharmacy, you could have a medical clinic, which would be great. Uh, but, uh, the owners who took it over would like to get it rezoned to be a little bit bigger. So, uh, in all fairness to them, uh, they are gonna be coming forward with a proposal. Uh, I offered them to have an information meeting with people on the street, so people on the street could hear exactly what they had planned. Uh, and, uh, but they're gonna come to council with a proposal, uh, and, uh. If it goes any further, uh, I will ask there be a meeting with people on Marchagall, cause I think people on Marchagall have had. Enough construction to live to last a lifetime. Uh, uh, but, uh, at the moment, Sydney, there's been no, uh, official proposal sent, we think one is coming very soon. And, and we, we have not discussed it, we have not, um, shared any information. Um, and, uh, I certainly, um, have my reservations, I would be in favor of. Of proposing, uh, a, a development of that size. If people on the street wanted it, and I think the only way that would be feasible is if. For instance, it was, uh, medical offices, for instance, if I knew that there was. Doc, like a medical clinic there, where you'd have doctors, and you'd have like, you know, like a walk-in clinic, what a wonderful thing for people living in the area. I'm not saying that I, that the residents would approve, but that's the kind of thing that, if, you know, they have the, the thing, it would, it would be a mixed use. And people would feel, okay, that's great for me, but, um, if it's just another residential building, I'm not gonna speak for the residents, and I'm not gonna speak. For the developers at this time, let them make their proposal.
Okay, but, uh, bear in mind that as it is, for ten months a year. All daytime parking by the school staff. Is beyond what they can park in their own parking lot, and they park all the way up the street. As well, when there's an event at Chabad, they park all the way up the street. Morning hours, particularly if there's something at the morning minion.
Yeah.
And in the evening, if they have an evening event. Uh, there is no really available parking for a commercial operation, I don't care if it's a medical clinic. Uh, the doctors will have to park somewhere, the patients will have to park somewhere, they're not.
Well, they would, uh, Sydney, any proposal would have to include indoor parking, and again, we're not. We're not there yet, because right now, if someone wanted to put up a medical clinic there tomorrow, and it met with the criteria. They would be able to do it under law, because that is what it's zoned for, if they wanna go beyond that. So the developer, the owners of the land wanna go beyond that, and we're gonna wait anxiously, I think their first proposal's coming very soon. And nothing will happen without everybody on that street and the neighborhood. Uh, because even it, uh, it, it'll affect, uh, people on Sir Walter Scott, uh, Frank, and people in Lan Ramon, cause it's close by a lot of traffic, so. Let's see what happens, go ahead, Frank.
Let me tell you something, I actually, uh, I actually honor Sydney for what he's saying, because. Um, a lot of people park on Sir Walter Scott and on Elan Ramon. Uh, especially on Shabbat, they leave their cars there, and the residents of Elan Ramon can't even park their car on the street.
Yeah.
For, until, in, until Saturday night, they leave the cars there, now, I got a beautiful corner law house. Where I can't even park my car on the street if I have guests over. And this has been my argument with transport, saying, can't we have something that, you know, favors the. Elan Ramon or Sir Walter Scott residents before anybody else, I mean, last Saturday, there were eight cars parked on Elan Ramon. And it stayed there Friday, Saturday, picked up late Saturday night.
Yeah, well, of course, that's.
But you can do about it, but.
Easier said than done, but, but yes, it's, 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 it's a good point.
Sydney has a very good point.
Yeah, that's the first time I've heard that, Frank, but, uh, thanks for mentioning that.
I can take pictures for you, Mike, you know me.
I know you very well, Frank is up at three in the, if you drive walk down Sir Walter Scott at three in the morning, you know what you're gonna see, Frank?
Mike, you'll also see on, on your own street, on Rembrandt, the overflow parking there. There are teachers there, there are people from Chabad. You know, parking is, is, I don't say it's, it's a, a burden, but it has become troublesome. And, uh, all I would say to the person who bought that piece of land, you knew damn well what it was zoned for. And what you could build, you wanted to flip a piece of land to take it two stories to three stories or four stories? Sorry, sir, you made a bad purchase, sell the land to someone else, sell it to the city. And the city will create a parking lot, as I suggested about eight years ago.
Sydney, they, they, they certainly deserve the opportunity to make whatever proposal they want, and then we will vote, you have to go, uh, uh, Rona?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for being on the call, thank you, we're gonna wind down shortly. Uh, uh, Jerry Mallon is on the call, Jerry's having his, uh, garage done, how's it going at fifty-seven ninety, is the garage almost done?
No, the garage will not be, sorry, completed till, uh, the end of August. And that is causing a parking problem, because. The ninety or a hundred and ten cars that were in our garage have to be on the street. So that might be what, uh, Sid was talking about down there on Sir Walter Scott. Because, uh, there's no place to park all these cars. So, um, also, there's a crosswalk, because I now watch from my balcony all the activity that goes on. And Rembrandt is a very busy street. Believe it or not, is like, very busy. And there used to be a crosswalk that now is faded. And I watch, uh, kids running for their life, because, uh, they come from Bialik or whatever.
Are you talking about the crosswalk on Kildare, Jerry, are you talking about the crosswalk on Kildare?
Uh, it's a crosswalk between, no, actually, it was, uh, Rembrandt, yeah, and Kildare, Rembrandt.
Okay, so near, near where this.
It's faded.
Uh, I'll make a note of that, Jerry. Okay.
So that's it, the garage will not be completed.
Yeah, well, we know, uh, we know that, uh, Rembrandt, every couple of years, there's so many buildings there, that one garage gets fixed, and there's. So what we've done is, there's parking, all the no parking signs have been covered on Merrimack. Um, and people can park there, uh, we've, but we have no choice, if this happens, garages need to be redone, and cars need to park somewhere. And we've had it virtually since the sixteen years I've been in council, almost every year, we, we've had, we've had something like that occur, so, uh.
I know, it'll be over in another couple of months, but in the meantime.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you for that, Gabe, go ahead.
Yeah, on the, that same issue, um. Uh, our, our community, so like, the, the townhouses that actually face out onto Rembrandt. Um, we all need our exterior staircases, um, re- redone, okay?
Oh, wow.
One in, one in particular, because it's actually becoming, um, like, un- unsafe. And, uh, and one of the people who lives in one of those houses is, uh, of impaired, impaired mobility.
Right.
You know, we're just about to sign a, a contract with the contractor for that staircase work, but. Where, where, you're like, where are they supposed to put their, put their trucks and equipment, if their car is on Rembrandt all the time?
Are they supposed to do that this summer?
Yes, it was, it's, they're supposed to start this summer, and, and they've, you know, they've gotta do it, because if you wait too long in, in the year.
Um, so, what, what you, now, that is gonna, that is gonna pose a big problem. I think what you need to do is, uh, tomorrow, there's someone else you can call, you can call Una Graham. At the, uh, Coatsy, at the Coatsy Luke, uh, Public Security. And she would be in a position to be able to tell you how it would be handled, cause it's public security that would do that, so, uh.
Um, what's your number?
Uh, let me, let me, uh, give you that information, send me an email to M Cohen at CoatsyLuke.org. I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna give you her email address off the top of my head, I'll, I'll send you her exact email address. And you can, uh, give her your situation, because it is a serious problem, and Jerry, you've got all those cars. Uh, that, that, you're not gonna be finished till the end of August, and then we have come, a truck that's coming.
Correct, and it would probably go till September, you're saying the end of August, but.
So the question is, can the city accommodate them, can there be a place, um, in, near Rembrandt Park that could accommodate them? I, I'm just speaking out loud, but let's see what we can do, because it is an issue, so let's see how we can, uh, we could try to.
This is gonna be a problem across the street for the, uh, concrete, because, uh, there's no place to park. So his, his spot is gonna be blocked, so they can't work there.
Yeah, exactly.
What he's saying.
I'm glad you brought it up, Gabe, it, it is gonna be an issue, but let's see if some public security has a solution. Um, to it, so we'll, I'll, I'll, you'll email me, I'll email you Una's, uh, coordinates, and you'll see if she responds and is able to. Have a solution for you, we may have to get some other people involved as well, so. Uh, okay, well, that, that was helpful, uh, information, anyone else, anything they wanna raise and share before we conclude? If not, uh, I wanna thank you all for joining me tonight, it was a small, but very, uh, very lively group. And I think we covered a lot of ground, and these meetings are extremely helpful to me. So, thanks everyone for your time, and, uh, please sign up at CoatsyLuke.org. Uh, dot, uh, slash engage for the meeting next week, spread the word. And, uh, I will have this recording up on my website, uh, hopefully, uh, by tomorrow, okay?
I signed up.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye, bye, everybody, bye, bye.